Good evening. Our City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilman Miltier and the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Let us pray. Eternal God, I have my Father, again we come in your presence. We ask that you direct our hearts and our thinking. What do we do? The honor and glory will belong to you. We ask his blessing in his son's name. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dooman?
Here.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Here.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yeah.
Councilmember Johnson?
Sure.
Councilmember Miltier?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of October the 21st, 2020 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-37. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council, the City of Suffolk hereby certifies at the best of each member's knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and item two, only such public business matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council, the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting is presented for council's consideration at this time.
Motion is in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Will move.
Councilman Goldberg? We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Dooman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier?
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Our next item is an approval of the minutes from the July 15, 2020 work session. Motion would be in order. Councilman Miltier?
Will move.
Vice Mayor?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dooman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier? Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. We have two special presentations this evening, and I'll turn to the manager.
Yeah, Mayor and Vice Mayor, members of council, we do have two presentations, special presentations this evening. The first one's an update on the COVID-19, and with us tonight we have Dr. Wagner from the Western Tidewater Health District. He'll provide the first presentation, and then the next presentation will be the COVID-19 Small Business Grant Update, which the Director of Economic Developments will provide, Kevin Hughes. But first, I'd like to call Dr. Wagner to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you again. Dr. Wagner, Western Tidewater Health District, going to give you an update on where we're at with the COVID-19 situation. Next slide, please, Andy, in the website. So as always, we're going to drill down a little bit into the data, three different sites that I'm going to utilize tonight, sites and some slides. This is our VDH side. Again, in Virginia, in total, we're looking at 168,000 cases, just over 3,500 deaths, and about 12,000 hospitalizations. As we scroll down, percent positivity rate, if I can get this to go down, in Virginia is about 4.9% currently. I think last I talked to you is about 4.5%. So it's, it's holding pretty steady in Virginia, however. I did a little look at some predictive modeling today, and it's anticipated in several models that the anticipation is an uptick in the next two to three weeks. Again, that's predictive modeling software. A lot of presumptions go into that software, so it's not a perfect science, but it does show in the next couple of weeks a probable upsurge in Virginia. We'll drill down a little bit into the locality data. Again, this looks at both our district, the Western Tidewater District, and more specifically in the, in the City of Suffolk. If we go down to... Andy, could you pull up Suffolk? It's a little hard to get on this thing. And if you could scan down a little bit. There you go. So this chart, again, is indicative of the recent reports of cases that we've had. You can see the upsurge we had in the early August timeframe, sort of tapering down over the last several weeks. You do see this uptick, which is, again, as I mentioned last time, largely due to a spike we see here from the Western Tidewater Regional Jail, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. But outside of that, this little extra increase here, it's really been relatively stable over the last few weeks in Suffolk, and actually decreasing a bit, so which is, which is a good, good situation. I will say that Western Tidewater is not quite in as good a shape as, as a whole as the City of Suffolk, with sort of Southampton and Franklin cases out there, causing Western Tidewater to, to spike a little bit higher. And we'll talk a little bit about the positivity rate for the region, or excuse me, for the district as we go forward. So again, this is Western Tidewater. If I click on there and go back up to the graphs, if you can do that for me, Andy, that'd be great. I think that's still the state, Andy, if you can. I think you need to highlight down to Western Tidewater. Thank you. Back up. This is Western Tidewater. Again, you can see, again, a relatively, not a completely smooth, this is, again, a seven-day average, lot of up pulls here caused by some outbreaks, two outbreaks in particular, one in the Deerfield Prison, and also this one here in the Western Tidewater Regional Jail. Aside from that, again, a fairly steady, a fairly steady pattern in numbers of cases, perhaps even a little bit of a down, a down slope in the last few weeks. And if you could go up to testing for me, Andy, I'll, we'll just highlight up above. And then go to the percent positivity testing. Yeah. Go to Western Tidewater again. Again, I mentioned the state of Virginia. Is it about 4.9%? About 2.4 million tests have been done in the state of Virginia. Yeah, thank you. You can see Western Tidewater, 8.1%, but I think a little bit of that is being drawn up north here by some of this artifact from the single outbreak that we've, we see here was closer down into the 5% region in the, in, in the district before risen up over the last week to 10 days. So we're keeping a close eye on that. Again, Suffolk in sort of a better overall position than the rest of the district with Southampton and Franklin showing an uptick in cases. Next slide, please, Andy. And this is some more data for you. This is, again, our eastern region, just to give you a concept of what's going on. And again, the eastern region, which includes us, Chesapeake, Norfolk, Virginia Beach, the eastern shore and peninsula. Again, what was a nice sort of steady down surge, and again, a little bit of flattening going on here. And this is very analogous to what we're seeing in the other parts of the state, sort of a general trend up. And that's how I mentioned that some of that predictive modeling would show that the state of Virginia is also probably due to swing up in this next couple of weeks. The state on the right is Western Tidewater. This gives you, just gives you an appreciation. Again, the cases have sort of flattened. We do have an upswing in the 50 to 59 age group. So this is kind of the, this is broken down by, as you can see, age groups here. And this slide down here, just to give you an appreciation for, this is some of the data I showed to the school boards, again, to show the breakdown of students, or excuse me, children 0 to 19, with a further breakdown of 10 to 19, 0 to 10, 0 to 9, and 10 to 19. So you can see, again, a relatively flat, or perhaps even a downsloping situation, but not an appreciable rise in those, in those cases. You see some slateth to the graph, but that would be expected in this relatively small number of cases we see in our, in our, in the, in that population. Next slide, please. Again, a little bit of eye chart, but I just want to, just want to bring forward, again, we talk about burden of disease here on the left of this graph. This is, again, this is specific to Suffolk. Our case, daily case incident rate, again, this is per 100,000, 7.8%. So not, not too bad. As you see this, we like to see it below 10. We'd love to see it below 5, but we're in, we're in that moderate range right now. And the percent positivity is actually looking relatively good within the city at 4.2%. Again, well below that 10% threshold that we'd like to see. This graph on the right, I believe I may have shown it last time. I can't remember. But this is what we showed. This is the CDC site for our K through 12, and I know we're not, we're not here to make decisions on schools, but they utilize a lot of the same data that is shown here. And this shows you a little bit different lens on cases. This is cases per 100,000, total number of cases per 100,000 over the last 14 days. So this is a cumulative average, again, in the higher risk category in that orange bar. But as you can see down here in the map, City of Suffolk is, is pretty analogous to a lot of the rest of the state. Many in red, a large number in, in, in orange, and just a couple in green. And these are the metrics, again, the total number of cases, as well as that percent positive rate that we, we monitor, you know, that is depicted in the other slides. But this gives you just a little bit different viewpoint. Again, none of them in themselves a perfect metric. All of these are not intended really to be predictive facts or figures or predictive dashboard. This is sort of one point in time, and actually looks retrospectively at the data. But that trend line, that, that trend we see in these, in these graphs gives us a good idea of kind of where we've been and where we, we think we might be going. Again, and you can see the trend here, although not a down arrow, it's depicted as a circle, meaning it's fluctuating, meaning it has to be steady for at least 14 days to get the down arrow, and it's only been, it's only been in a downward trend for 12 days. So all in all, looking fairly decent for the City of Suffolk, but again, keeping very close tabs on the, on the data as we move forward. Next slide, please. Just wanted to touch on a few current topics that the health district's looking at. Obviously, lots of discussions with schools. Schools are now kind of entering that second nine-week decision. Many have been online, and I believe the Suffolk School Board is meeting Friday. I'll be part of their offsite to discuss the phased reopening, or potentials for phased reopening, and how that will look. I did want to talk a little bit about the Western Tidewater Jail. I did mention there was, there's been, we've been working a very sizable outbreak there. In early September, our first, 9th of September, we noted the first case, first confirmed case of COVID in a, in an offender at that location. From early to mid September, we continued some what we call point prevalence testing, and we identified 79 positive cases in offenders during that testing. And so we, we continued to test. And on the 30th of September, we had another 109 offenders plus six staff members and contractors test positive. So we, we worked very closely with the jail, looking at some enhanced mitigation, social distancing practices, you know, getting their inmate population, you know, positioned with the best distancing that they could. And we continue testing. And since the 1st of October, we've had seven positive cases in offenders. We'd like that to be zero, but it's, it's definitely heading in the right direction. And I think the, the measures they put in place are, have worked well. We'll continue to monitor that situation closely. And as I mentioned, we're continuing to watch Deerfield, the state prison, off, off in Southampton Counties. Lots of testing still continues, although our, our testing gets a little, is getting a little bit more focused. Tomorrow, we have testing for Suffolk. We have testing tomorrow at, from 9:00 to 3:00 in Bell Harbor, Centerra Bell Harbor, and then also on the, on the 31st of October at the Friendship Cathedral out in Chukatak from 2:00 to 4:00. So we're going to continue to offer those testing opportunities. We're also testing in other parts of the district throughout the month, so we're going to, we'll continue that effort for sure. Flu vaccinations, again, would be remiss if I did not put forward the, you know, reminder to everyone, flu season is definitely upon us. We aren't seeing a huge surge in cases yet, but definitely this is the time to be active and get those flu vaccinations. I mentioned this a little bit last, last time, but the, the planning for COVID vaccination is, is still well underway. We still do not have a definitive timeline, although we're still planning for the early November timeframe for the arrival of vaccine, although we all recognize that that first, first allotment will likely go to a very select tier-one group of, of recipients. But we'll, we're continuing in earnest, kind of waiting for, to see which, which of the vaccines, you know, finishes out of phase three clinical trials and becomes public. And I think that's all I've got, subject to your questions.
Any questions? Councilman Fawcett?
Doc, appreciate you coming out.
Sir.
Always good to hear from you. You know, some of this COVID is kind of trending to a pneumonia situation. You know, I don't know what your theory is or what your thought is about the...
Trending to the what situation? I'm sorry.
Pneumonia.
Okay.
Some of this going into pneumonia.
Yes.
Some people have had this COVID, and then all of a sudden, boom, they got an onset of pneumonia on top of it.
Right.
So there is a shot for pneumonia out there, but I don't know what the ranges are for that. I know I get one, but, you know, I'm an old dude compared to some of these other people that are out there.
It is, it is typically for age 65 and older is the, is the typical target range for pneumonia. But what you see with COVID, you see with many other respiratory diseases. The vaccine you get for, with the pneumonia vaccine is different than COVID. It's a different, it's a different strain of, of virus. Actually, it's a, it's a, it's a bacteria. But, so you can get vaccinated for it, but it, it, it'll, it won't help you for COVID necessarily. It does, it does help provide, it does help the underlying, I guess, protective situation with the lungs, but it doesn't, it doesn't provide direct, you know, immunity against COVID. Only the COVID vaccination will. But certainly pneumonia vaccine, vaccine is, is highly recommended in, in the, in the correct population, yes.
Okay. So is it a series of one shot?
Yes.
That'll carry you out for...
It is. Usually, I believe it's a 10-year, no, excuse me, five years for, for pneumovax, exactly. So, but we highly recommend it. It's, it's typically done, like I say, in the 65 and older age group. But, you know, flu, flu is, is, is a must. We highly recommend pneumovax, too, for the, for the correct population, and then the COVID vaccination once it's available.
The 65 and older people out there and get, get that vaccine.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You bet.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Dr. Wagner, for your report. And just a couple comments and maybe a question. To me, I'm trying to look daily about what they're doing about wearing masks and people being affected. And now they're saying the uptick is going up with people, and with Thanksgiving coming, holidays, and all families, asking families not to get together for that, sort of stay at home and do Zoom or whatever. But it seemed to me that people are getting more relaxed in wearing masks, and I think this is not good. this is not good. Is it good or whatever? I know people get tired of sitting home, but then too, you have to protect each other as we go out in the public eyesight. So with the mask, talk a little bit about the importance of wearing masks.
It's, it's huge. You know, it's, it's really, that in addition to distancing is, is our only, our only armor right now. So we, you know, you need to, in, you absolutely need to mask. It's, it's proven, it's effective, it works. You're right, there is certainly a, a level of, of, I guess you could call it mask fatigue out there, people just sort of letting their guard down a little bit, or in some cases, quite a bit. And that, you know, it, it just increases our susceptibility. That, in addition to the things you've mentioned, are very concerning, and I think that's why we start seeing some of these models as people move more indoors, they gather for holidays, they, you know, they, they travel, they get in groups and clusters, sort of, again, COVID knows no boundaries as far as holidays or, or birthdays or parties or situations. And I think I've mentioned here before, but, you know, people have to understand that anytime they're in a group setting, even though the, the group may seem familiar, there's susceptibility to, to passing of the virus. So I would highly recommend, you know, that people look at those plans they have forthcoming, for sure. I know, you know, the holidays tend to be a time, and that's very concerning to us, both with COVID and flu, frankly. It's just another, another avenue that this virus can spread, and the more, the more we, we get together, there was a study published today by the CDC, which talks about, they're looking at potentially shifting their amount of contact that you have. It's always been six feet for 15 minutes. Well, there was a study that came out, in fact, just today, in what they call the MMWR, which would show, and they're considering maybe doing six feet for 15 minutes within 24 hours, meaning that means there's a lot, there could be a lot more of this aerosolization of this virus than, than we think. So they're, they're considering increasing those, 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 their guidance on that because of the fact that they're saying there was, there was a case of a, of a, a prison worker, in fact, up in the state of Vermont, and he did not have large-scale exposure for long periods of time. He just had frequent intermittent exposure to positive cases over a 24-hour period, which added up to about 17 minutes of time, and he became infected. So where I'm going with that is, is just as a reminder, as we gather, as we get together, really consider the need to do that at this point in time, and whenever possible, and whenever, wear a mask, so, yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Wagner.
You bet.
Councilman Doeman?
Oh, take my mask off, I want to talk. Thank you, thank you for your presentation. Again, I did want to make one comment in regards to the jail. I mean, the jail, and we have a huge influx of cust, of prisoner customers, yeah, prisoners coming and going every day, local, local prisoners and also federal prisoners. You know, we cannot, do not require them to be tested before intake. The outbreak was not due to any lack of caution or process or preventative measures on part of the jail. I mean, no more could have been done than what had, what had been done. As a matter of fact, we were kind of chirping about how we'd gone four or five months with hardly any cases at all. So, you know, the influx or the spike in cases was due to one specific group of, of prisoners that, you know, were taken in at one time. And of course, they are quarantined when they get there, that's part of the process that we have, until we can do temperatures and make sure that nobody else is positive. But, I mean, it is well under control, and I don't want it, anyone to get the idea that Western Tidewater Regional Jail was not doing their job and be conscious of what's going on.
I would agree, and, and it, you know, that's a, that's a very at-risk population for sure, but they've, they have done a good job, and they, like I say, there was no, there was no hesitation in, in, you know, when we looked at their current procedures, processes and procedures, they were, they were solid. We made a few recommendations on a couple of things to improve, but you're right, it's, they got a quick handle on it, and it's getting much better quickly, so, right.
Councilman Goldberg.
Yes, thank you, Doctor. Thanks for being here, thanks for the report. My question, I get a lot of calls and people asking me about testing, the availability of testing, should they be tested, you know, all of that. Can you talk a little bit about the testing process and who should get it and when and whatever?
Yeah, typically when you get, when you offer a test, most of the time it's for two situations typically. It's for a symptomatic person that's, that's having COVID-like symptoms or a known close contact of a, of a known positive, of a confirmed positive. It's not that you can't test asymptomatics or people that just sort of want to get tested. And we do, we do a fair amount of that, especially in our testing with the, with the health district. I can tell you that a lot of the emergency rooms and some of the urgent cares aren't as inclined unless it's clinically indicated, meaning you have, you have symptoms or you're close contact. That's why we continue as a health district to continue offering testing, to continue to offer testing. We can't do it every day, all day, like, like an urgent care can or something like that, but we, we try and offer intermittent testing because we know there's, there's, there's a need out there. Not as much in Suffolk as it is in some of our, the western part of our district, but it, as you can see, or as I mentioned, we continue to do, to do testing. You know, sometimes in testing, testing is not a, it's not a panacea though, because it's one point in time. A lot of people, again, are a little, under a little bit of a misconception that, you know, okay, I'm going to go get tested, and while I'm waiting for my test, I'm going to go about doing what I'm doing. That's not indicated. If you have an indication of the, the need to get tested, you really should be quarantining yourself until the, those test results come back. And you also have to remember that that test is for one point in time. If I tested you in the morning, the sample was obtained, I go out and about somewhere and I'm exposed that afternoon, that test may be negative, but you could, you could have had an exposure. So it's, I just caution people on testing a little bit. It's, it's, it's very necessary, certainly in symptomatics and close contacts of known exposures. But sometimes in the, the milieu of just generalized testing, it can get a little muddled there, I think, sometimes, so.
Thank you, Doc.
Does that make sense?
Thank you very much.
Along that same line, if, if you've been in close contact with someone that has it, and let's say you're a couple of days out, and you go get tested and you're negative, do you need to be tested? I mean, clearly that couple of days is not enough.
Right.
So would you be tested again, or you should quarantine for sure?
You should still quarantine, but in the interim, there is a, a testing strategy that's, that's approved or, you know, approved by the CDC where you can get two negative tests within a 24-hour period of time, which can, outside of 24-hour period of time, I should say, we don't want to get them on the same day. You can get a test and then, say, over 24 hours later, get another negative test. And, but the, the real, because of the, the lag in the testing, I'll call it, the better solution is to typically quarantine if you've known you've been into contact with a, with a known positive patient, so. And that's really, the CDC's largely gone away from recommendations of testing to go back to work, to go back to school, to go back. They really want that time that it takes for that incubation period to be cleared. That's really a more, a more tried and true way to attack that situation, so.
Anyone else? Councilman Ward?
Yes, Dr. Wagner, I just want to, I went to, they was giving free flu shots, and they had adult flu shots, and then she told me that they also had the flu shot for 65 and older shots. So I didn't know that, so what's like, what's the difference, you know, from adult to being 65 and older?
Yeah, there's a, it, you know, it has to do with, there's a, there's a certain vaccine that's made that's more effective in the 65 and older age group, a high dose, they call it high-dose flu vaccination. So that would typically be what we'd try and offer in a 65 and older member, patient. But, you know, that would be preferred. You can, you know, the, the other flu vaccine will provide protection, but it's, it's, it's preferable to get the high-dose vaccine in a, in a 65 and older patient.
But that's what she asked, she asked me, that I could still take it, but, you know, she prefers it takes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager, part two.
At this time, Kevin G., from 30 to 25. Wait for my slides to pop up here. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, give you a quick recap on what we've done thus far and, and what we were dealing with currently. And so you may recall, I was up here and gave you a status update about the June distribution. So we saw a little over $290,000 go out the door to four different categories. Those categories came up as a result of having limited funding to that point. So those were the numbers that we've talked about previously. In September, we started out with $200,000. That was approved by the OBSC Healthcare Foundation. Due to increased interest and we wanted the ability to max out grants to 5,000 apiece, as many as we could, we went ahead and worked with the EDA to, to bring in some of the funding that, that this body approved to go to small business grants for this, for this project. And so we brought in an, an additional supplement of $350,000 out of that $500,000 that, that you made available for the September distribution. So I'll, I'll give you a recap and I'll walk through some of these numbers. I will let you know that they're a little fluid, but we feel pretty good about where we are. We've got a couple more quality checks that we'll do this week before we get out checks first of next week. But, but right now, we've gone through a couple of different times, and these are the numbers that we're seeing right, right, right thus far. So there could be a couple of shifts over the next couple of days, but for the most part, this is it. So we saw 110 applications come in during our September distribution. We, we wanted the ability to try to give each applicant $5,000 as, as a max on that distribution. Again, those were reimbursements on the brick and mortar, qualifying expenses were for rent, mortgage, private utilities, inventory, things that we're selling or something they would use to create that inventory. We also opened up an opportunity for home-based businesses and worked with the EDA to identify the opportunity for those to keep it expenses related to the pandemic itself. And so we were looking for reimbursements related to masks, gloves. We, we threw the opportunity for Zoom subscriptions, so we tried to be flexible, but those were the parameters that we worked in for the home-based businesses. So here are the, the numbers, as it were, and there's a couple of updates I'll give out of typo in here. So again, we had 110 applicants, 101 were brick and mortar, 92 of those qualified, nine did not. Ran into some issues regarding their business license. There were some industries that just weren't applicable per the, the, the application. On home base, you see the numbers are a little off, so we actually had a total of nine home-based businesses that applied. One right now has received expenses, reimbursement, and then eight, it shouldn't, should be eight, not 10, currently did not have expenses, and so we, we don't have a reimbursement for them at this time. So again, we're going through those, those applications. Right now, of the 92 that have approved, 67 of them will be receiving the, the maximum of 5,000. What we're doing with the other 25 or so is going back to them one-on-one because they either did not submit receipts, there were receipts that did not apply, or they didn't hit 5,000. So we're, we're really going through each one, asking them, hey, you're right at 3,000, do you have 2,000 more? And really, it's a lot of interaction, and it takes a, a lot of time. Greg is pretty much cross-eyed at, at this point, but we're, we're powering through. It's taken us a little bit longer, but there's just piles and piles of receipts and information. And when you say a receipt, somebody hears bank statement. So then you have to go back and, and talk through it. So it's, it's a lot of hand-holding, but, but definitely worthwhile. So based upon those 92, here's a quick breakdown for you. Northern Suffolk made up 24, and then between downtown and central, you can see that, that 66, and then two in the villages. That's pretty consistent for what we did in June as well. Here's a breakdown of the industry, restaurant being the, the predominant applicant with retail and hair and beauty following behind that, and then a spread of health and hospitality and, and gyms. And then finally, again, this was a second go-around, and so we saw 30 first-time grant recipients and 62 second-time, and then obviously there were some that, that did not come back. We did try to put some special emphasis into increasing that northern Suffolk number, going out to some new restaurants and, and groups that opened. On the second go-around, the September distribution, we actually allowed a more recent opening business to participate. So you just had to have a business license by September 1, previously was, I believe, January 1. So we tried to really open up that window for opportunity. And just want to walk through a, a couple additional resources and programs that we're continuing to do related to the COVID pandemic. We, we also began to receive some applications after our deadline closed, and so we went ahead and opened an October distribution. And so that outstanding funding that you made available is currently in play, so we are receiving applicants for that. And so as we're closing out September, we've, we've opened October, and so we're actively receiving those. This is a snapshot from our website. If you go to Yes Suffolk, there's a banner ad there for COVID resources, and that green box has the application. The state also has a program that they've been modifying and making it a bit more friendly as they go about this as well. One of the things that was a, a tough one to deal with is that they were not allowing those at a locality basis who receive CARES funding to apply for rebuild. They've since gotten rid of that, so they're also learning through this as well, and so encourage folks to apply for the Virginia Rebuild Program, and that can be found on the, the link there, or just Google in Rebuild Virginia. We're continuing our Job Fair Program. We call it the Workforce Opportunity Wednesday, or WOW. This is a shot of Juan Chees participating. We spread everybody out at the Hilton Garden Inn, and we've been able to, to work with some folks and create some new job opportunities. But if, if you know anyone looking to hire, if we can help place people, please help us get the word out. And then we're continuing our outreach and community efforts with our restaurant partners. And so just a quick snapshot, we are currently working with 30 locally-owned restaurants. We're doing about 600 meals per week throughout the city at, at different locations, and we're currently working with five different nonprofit, nonprofit or faith-based outreach partners. It's been a really rewarding program and project that the restaurants can look forward to having revenue coming in because it's so hard to, to figure it out these days. And then the, the folks at these churches and Salvation Army are just absolutely wonderful. It makes you feel good that we've got such wonderful people throughout the city. And I want to thank you for your support and happy to answer any questions related to the grain, if you have any.
Questions? Thank you very much. At this time, we'll consider the adoption of the entire agenda as printed unless anyone would like to remove a consent agenda item for a separate vote. So a motion would be in order.
Removed.
Motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Do we have any agenda speakers?
No, Mayor Johnson.
Would you please present the consent agenda for consideration?
Item number seven, in ordinance to accept and appropriate a justice assistance grant from the United States Department of Justice in support of the Suffolk Police Department and Office of the Commonwealth's Attorney. And item number eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, approving the issuance of revenue refunding bonds by the Western Tidewater Regional Jail Authority.
Manager, would you please provide the overview?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Councilmembers. The grant we're receiving from, or have received from the U.S. Department of Justice does support the police department for training and equipment, and also supports the Commonwealth Attorney's Office for Supplies. Of that $29,044 grant, $24,687 goes to the police department for their equipment and training, and the remaining $4,357 goes to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office for Supplies. There is no match to this grant, or no local match for this grant, and also this would increase the Consolidated Grants Fund, which is recommended by staff. Item eight, of course, is the refunding, revenue bonds refunding of up to $6,850,850 or $850,000. excuse me, for the Western Tidewater Regional Jail Authority. This action will provide debt savings to the authority and plus to member jurisdictions, the City of Suffolk, Franklin, and Ottawa County. That savings is estimated at approximately $450,000. As part of the ordinance, of course, and being part of the authority, we do pledge our moral obligations to these refinanced bonds, and adoption of the resolution is recommended.
Thank you. Do I have a motion on these items?
Remove, Mayor.
We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dooman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero. The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. We'll next move to public hearings. We have a public hearing this evening, which is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a daycare family day home, five to 12 children, on property located at 6012 Steeplechase Lane, zoning map 12H parcel 1C asterisk 126, account number 34668400. This is CUP 2020-014. Mr. Manager, please provide the overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, at this time, I'd like to call David Hanley to the podium. He's the Director of Planning and Community Development, and he'll provide the staff report.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. City Manager, for your consideration tonight is conditional use permit request, CUP 2020-014, that was submitted by Dana Smith, Washington, applicant on behalf of Lamar M. and Dana S. Washington property owners, in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit request to establish a daycare, family daycare home, five to 12 children, on property located at 6012 Steeplechase Lane, zoning map 12H parcel 1C*126. The affected area is further identified as being located in Sleepy Hole, Voting Borough, the Zone PD Plan Development Overlay District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Inner Range Suburban Use District. On the screen, you see in red the location of the proposed facility within the Steeplechase subdivision. This shows the facility in the area. It depicts the site that has sufficient parking as required by the code for this. The applicant does have one assistant that helps with the children. This is currently in operation as a daycare one that currently has permission to have up to four children. This is the next step up that a number of these facilities have been going to. This shows the facility. It does meet all the requirements as far as areas of them and also hours of operation and required parking. And this shows the outdoor play area that is required. At the Planning Commission meeting in September, it was recommended by the Planning Commission that this body approve this request by a seven-zero vote. I can stand and answer any questions at the termination of the public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, please read the timing system for this hearing.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. This public hearing is now open. Will the first proponent please come forward?
To, on my stand here, on behalf of my daughter Dana Smith Washington, I'm requesting approval for her...
Ma'am, could you get a little closer to the mic, or just pull it up?
And ma'am, if you could also state your name and address, please. Thank you.
My name is Delphine Bryce. I'm the mother of Dana Smith Washington. I'm requesting approval for her... My name is Dana, I mean, my name is Delphine Bryce, I'm sorry. I'm standing here for my daughter Dana Smith Washington. I'm requesting for approval for her daycare, for Happy Hearts Daycare. Basically, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor of? Do we have anyone else to speak in favor of? Do we have anyone to speak in opposition? Ma'am, did you wish to speak again? No. This public hearing is now closed. Counsel? Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, ma'am.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dooman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. We next have an ordinance authorizing the city manager to pay hazardous pay bonuses to city employees for work performed during the COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. As recall, at your September 2nd meeting, there was a detailed presentation on the proposed plan of moving forward with hazard pay bonuses. At that time, we were still working through the details of the plan as we wanted to do the right thing and get it right. As you know, you were briefed how some of the other cities got a little quick and then had to back up a little bit. So tonight, we bring you forth the action authorizing the city manager to provide those hazard pay bonuses, and also the transferring of funds to allow that to occur. We have a very brief presentation this evening by both our Directors of Human Resources, Robin Nguyen, and also our Director of Finance, Tealyn Hanson. At this time, I'm going to call Robin to the podium to provide you the upfront piece, and then Tealyn will follow on the financing part of that. Thank you.
Good evening. Next slide, please. It is the city's intent to recognize the contributions that all employees continue to make during the pandemic. We believe that a tiered approach was the best approach in helping to meet the needs of recognizing those employees that face COVID-related hazards on a regular and consistent basis. It is recommended those full-time employees receive $2,000, and part-time employees would receive $1,000. The second tier is for those employees that continue to support the city during the pandemic. Full-time employees will be at $500, and part-time employees will be paid $250. For consideration, the employee needed to be hired on or before September 30th of 2020 as we work through the plans. As always, we deeply appreciate the council's support, and we hope that you will vote in favor of the ordinance that Ms. Hanson will put forth before this evening.
Now, Tealyn will come and provide the background on the financing of it.
Everything I own. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. For the hazard pay bonuses, the total cost is estimated to be about $2.4 million to pay for the bonuses for all the employees who are included in this list. The ordinance that you have in front of you is a series of budget transfers to transfer the money out of the general fund and into the various funds, all of the other special revenue, utility, enterprise, and internal service funds to cover the bonus in those funds. Sorry, I'm a little out of breath. And so the total transfers needed is approximately $683,308, and the resolution or the ordinance in front of you accounts for an amendment to the budget to allow for those transfers. Now, how we're going to pay for the $2.4 million. The CARES Act, this gets a little technical into the definition of the CARES Act and what we can and can't spend the money on. The CARES Act does not allow us to pay bonuses with CARES Act funds. It's very limited in the types of hazard pay bonuses that we can pay out of the CARES Act, and it gets down to analyzing employee by employee. What the CARES Act does allow us to do, however, is something called a presumptive election. And what that means is that we can presume by the rules of the CARES Act that all public safety employees' salaries can be covered with CARES Act, except for bonuses. So we can take that election, and what we can do is we can transfer the actual salaries paid to some of our public safety employees between July 1st and September 30th in the first quarter of the year, transfer those over to CARES Act, and then use the money that is then freed up in the general fund budget to cover the hazard pay bonuses. It's kind of a technical detail, but it's how we have to work that to work within the CARES Act guidelines and rules. So the reason for the authorization of the budget transfers out of the general fund, then, is we are freeing up general fund dollars to pay the bonuses. We need budget amendments to transfer the budgets into the funds where some of the employees reside because they're not paid out of the general fund. That is how it's all going to work, and we have plenty of money at that point in time. We have plenty of available budget in the general fund to cover that. So both Robin and I are here to answer any questions that you may have, and thank you for your support.
Two other items that I would like to provide to council. Of course, we're looking
at the employee population that was hired before September 30th of this year, and also previous staff who have left employment with the city would not be eligible for the bonuses.
Councilman Fawcett?
Just a brief question. One, are we still on track to get this into their paycheck by the 31st or 30th?
Yes, sir. By the last check of this month, we're proposing to get that on. It's an October 30th check, being a Friday.
So I assume, because of the way it's written here and the way it breaks out, is I would imagine the department heads probably, or somebody knows who's at the 2,000 range and who's at the 1,000 range, and so on and so forth.
That's correct. It's been worked with the HR, worked with the department heads, and I can ask Robin to probably address that a little bit more in detail. But yes, it was not done in a...gone a curtain.
Yes, we actually did work with the department leaders on their allocations. In fact, we asked the department leaders to provide us information first, and then we layered the amounts on and then sent it back to the departments for their review and confirmation.
So they pretty much know who's covered and who wasn't, depending on the tier-one, tier-two factors that you've implemented?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, with that, I'd like to move for approval of the ordinance.
Councilman Goldberg?
Just of Tealyn, if you don't mind, Mayor. What's the balance in the CARES Act left?
I believe Tealyn can answer that, hopefully. We did talk about it earlier today.
I needed to bring all my stuff up. I actually put together some current numbers through today of what we have spent and what we've allocated to spend in the CARES Act, including this money that we're going to transfer to CARES Act for salaries so that we can free up money in the general fund. We will have allocated or spent about $9.2 million, which leaves a balance of about $6.8 million left in the CARES Act funding.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I second, Mayor, the motion.
Motion in a second. Councilman Dooman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just another question, so I get some clarity as far as the dollars are concerned. I understand what Tealyn said. Technically, we cannot pay bonuses, so we're using CARES money to cover the salary, and then that savings covers the bonuses. So it's just kind of a matter of semantics as to where the money went. That I don't understand. And if my math's right, are you saying we're using about 1.7 million of CARES money, and the 683 is being transferred? I'm not 100% clear on how many dollars were the CARES dollars we're using versus general fund money?
We're going to use $2.5 million of the CARES money to cover salaries, which frees up $2.5 million in the general fund. And then we need to transfer the $683,000 out of the general fund into those various funds that...I can get back up here on the screen.
So we're using all CARES money for the 2.4 million? So there's not...
We're using general fund money, but we're freeing it up by using CARES money.
Long story short, we're using 2.4 million of CARES money.
I don't want to stand here and say we're using CARES Act money for hazard bonuses because...
It's going in and coming out, round the horn, 2.4. Okay, that's all right. Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dooman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you very much. We have no resolutions this evening. We do have a staff report on the Suffolk Executive Airport and the economic development update. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, at this time, I'll ask Kevin Hughes to come to the podium and provide you that staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening again. So it's been a little while. COVID kind of sidelined us related to airport updates. I don't have a great update for you because we've been slow out there, obviously, but we'll walk through it nonetheless. But the good news is economic development activity has not slowed, and so I've got some really great photos of some activity around the city. So we remain fully leased, both on tea hangers and box hangers. This was the decrease that we saw. So since we haven't given you an update in a while, we brought together January through September. So you can see on gallons sold, we're down about 25,000 gallons, and that's equated to being down about $37,000 over that same timeframe. We began to see activity pick up towards the spring. The Navy seemed to kind of figure out training, so Special Forces was out jumping, saw some corporate traffic, maybe avoiding the commercial airports come in. And so it's not quite back to normal, but it's starting to look that way. We still have nine corporate aircrafts based out there, just a sample of some of the visitors, including Nucor Steel, International Paper, Connell and Companies, Hormel, and the like, and a lot of jets that get rented in, but different corporations. Got three capital projects that we're currently working on. I'll start at the top there. That's the large one is the corporate apron, and so we'll be resurfacing this in the not-too-distant future, but that's currently under design. The equipment maintenance shelter, we've talked about this before. We went out for bid last year, and the numbers came back really high. So we've dropped back and gone to a more reasonable design in hopes of having our equipment out of the elements and staying within budget. So we're kind of dropping back and re-putting that out for RFP in order to stay within the funding that was allotted. And then we're hoping to finalize this project. We've seen some increased interest out here. And so your last CIP approved some funding for the water line install, and so that's currently under design. The site plan was in there, just didn't have some of the instructions related to the water line. So we're currently under design, and hopefully, we'll be building that in not-too-distant future. The RFPs for both Hangar Seven and Nine are in, and so we're currently reviewing those. And it's our hope that in the coming month or so, we'll be bringing you some leases for your votes related to both those facilities. Currently, Skydive Suffolk is operating out of both of those with their different LLCs. And just want to round out with a thank you, and happy to answer any questions you may have before I jump into economic development. If not, we'll keep rolling.
Go forward.
All right. So again, same time period, January through September, existing industries where is a combination of virtual and in-person. You can see that number. Our goal has always been to try to hit 30 a month, and so we've been able to do that throughout the pandemic, so a good number there. We are continuing to see existing industry visits, some of them multiple visits, and surprisingly, on those industry sectors, you'll see that 13, that's retail. So we are seeing retail activity getting to a decision we're seeing taking a little bit longer, but the due diligence is actively occurring, especially since there's so much ground being broken out in Suffolk. And so hopefully, that all pans out for us, but good activity nonetheless. And you can kind of see how it's broken up. So we've had a total of 56 visits by new prospects since January into September. So I'll just take you around the city real quick with some photos of some activity. This is the Point at Harbor View, so our partner in development, G's Company, is under construction on the infrastructure. They've started some of the padwork in the back of the tree line there for some of the residential portions, and G's has their first building under site plan review for a retail structure that'll go fronting that front portion there. So we're getting some good interest and questions about that development. At the top, those two shots, that's continuing expansions of the Bico's Bridgeport development, a couple phases of retail and another phase of residential. And then up at Harbor View Boulevard, that's the Lakeview Medical Center that Bayview Physicians is finishing out. And this is just, it's crazy. This Amazon project, I don't know how to talk anymore about it, but so... But so, just to see that scale, you can see on one section of the building as they're continuing to erect steel. The other side is starting to tilt up concrete. And if you can squint your eyes, those are people at the bottom. But those concrete walls are going up and they're covering about two floors. You can see the five stories going up there, but just a massive, amazing project. Downtown Peanut Crossing is well underway. And so, that first phase, that large brick former peanut roasting facility, let's see, right here. I think that'll house about 56 residential units. And so, they're starting some of the infrastructure that'll feed and support that development. So, really exciting to see that on that large parcel. And then, down on 58, the work is underway for the western entrance out at Virginia Port Logistics. That's the Massimo Zanetti Beverage Warehouse. And then, in addition to that, behind that, Equis is building a speculative warehouse of about 350,000 square feet. So, they're putting two projects, two projects and a roadway up at the same time. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, next move to motions. We have a motion to schedule a public hearing on November 4th, 2020 to consider the adoption of an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of right-of-way and easements for the Route 17 and Crittenon Road Intersection Improvements Project UPC 111089. Mr. Manager? Motion is in order. Councilman Dooman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make one comment before we move on this particular motion for a public hearing. And I have received a few phone calls and spoken to the city manager also in regards to some concerns from the Civic League and us adhering to some of the federal 106 programs and everyone having the opportunity to comment in that regard. Our coordination with VDOT and also the FHWA. So, if it's possible, when we have this public hearing in November 4th, if we could have a brief presentation to ensure everyone that those, that guidelines has been adhered to and proper notification. And I know that you told me that we, that the 106 program was determined to have been completed. So, if you could comment on that.
Okay. And I may, what I may is ask LJ Hansen, Director of Public Works, to come forward. I believe LJ's coming through the door now.
Yes, sir, Mr. Dooman. The FHWA, we had a conversation with them to discuss what the role of the consultant would be as it related to the project and specifically, what effects that would have on our project. The Section 106 is a federal program, and that was determined to have been closed before the award of the consulting position was awarded. So, in our conversation with FHWA and with VDOT, they informed us that, from their standpoint, 106 was closed. It would not be reopened, that they would continue to work with the Civic League and try to address their concerns and their questions, but that it was incumbent upon us to continue moving forward on the project. And that's what we've, that's the approach that we've taken.
And so, they do, the Civic League does have the ability to continue to communicate between now and then. But you're telling me the 106 program is done and we will be moving forward?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, VDOT has authorized us to move forward in the right-of-way process. As you're aware, there's a parallel process that we work through on transportation projects. One is the process that we worked through with VDOT where we get authorization to move to right-of-way. So, there's a design phase, then there's a right-of-way phase, then there's a construction phase. VDOT and, if it's a federal project, VDOT and the FHWA authorize us to make those moves between the different phases. They've authorized us to move to the right-of-way phase. At this point, what we're seeking to do is come to city council and ask for city council's authorization to move forward with right-of-way. And we don't typically come back and ask for permission to go to construction. Once we get authorization to acquire property, we'll finish the project out at that point. So, this is, the process that we're proposing to come back for on November 4th would be to seek permission to acquire right-of-way from the city.
And so, November 4th? November 4th is a public hearing and we'd be allowed for input at that time?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Right, a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
To approve.
Second.
Councilman Goldberg is the second?
Second.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dooman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. We have a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, November 4th, 2020 at 4:00 PM unless canceled. A motion is in order.
To move.
Have a second?
All right.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dooman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. We have late agendas, non-agenda speakers?
Yes, Mayor Johnson. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Kelly Hangler, 9345, representing the Crittenon Eclipse Hobson Heritage Civic League regarding encroachment.
Good evening, council. My name's Kelly Hangler and I live at 9345 Eclipse Drive. I apologize, it took me two hours to get here. And yes, I scrubbed from head to toe and changed it to clean scrub, so please fear not. My comment is this, that is, I actually just got off the phone with the advocacy council for historic preservation. We requested at the time that the NEPA was presented to us for the project for public hearing in June to be a consulting party under Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. Basically, the statements that have been made is that the NEPA was closed before it was even opened. The NEPA involves environmental as well as historic. We were only wishing to comment towards the historic under Section 106. So, in fact, I will be forever requesting the actual letter from the Federal Highway Administration, period, reality check, because a letter needs to be forwarded stipulating that there is closure for the Section 106 of which it is not. I am forwarding a grievance to the Department of Justice, the OIG, and the Federal Highway Administration as a part of a congressional inquiry. The people of our community have been seeking to do one thing as a chapter of the National Civic League, of which the city is part of the National League of Cities. Our model charter comes in part from both of those organizations. We are tired. I, Kelly Hangler, am tired. I am tired as a professional. I'm tired as a veteran. I'm tired as a taxpayer of hearing untoward remarks that I will not repeat to this body from certain individuals, a staff, who demean the existence of our Civic League. That will stop because I will bring those comments forward. We have been minimized before federal and state agencies right from here inside of this city. Not the council, but staff. In the end, the people who live in Sleepy Lake, the same as the property next to Claudia Holland, okay? You simply cannot, on the environmental side, discharge water into the Sleepy Lake privately titled indeed "Lake", and stop. It is not yours to discharge into. There are multiple other points that were drawn up by an environmental engineer and submitted as part of their homeowners association submission from Sleepy Lake. These are our neighbors and our friends, and they never had one single extra discussion to them about their concerns in that regard. I really don't have a whole lot more to say. I am, again, exhausted, as I'm sure you all are, trying to get through this pandemic together in a good way. But there is no time under this constitution, whether the US or the Virginia State Constitution or our charter, in which the people's voice should be suffocated. We are summarily, as stakeholders, as the people who give to our communities, absolutely fraught with frustration. I thank you, and I thank all those who served to give me the ability under the Freedom of Information Act to be the executive president of our Civic League. I'm not speaking for myself, other than I'm tired. I will not parade all of the people in here from 30 minutes away up to this microphone to prove that is true. They have sent many letters and you have received them. My five minutes is about to be up. I'll call it on myself, and as has been pointed out by many, many people, in the 26 months that we have been bringing forward, the Department of Interior letters, congressional inquiries, fact finding, that we have been seeking for ourselves to secure funds, actually, for our community to do the things that the grant money that was given to our community for community development was taken from us summarily, also minimized, and used to dredge Bennetts Creek. There are many, many other stories such as this that we talk about and we say to ourselves, what importance is it to bring it before the city council? And this is the importance. I am coming here for 26 months at the behest of stakeholders of our community as a collective. That is all to be of service. And what has been brought to the table? Thank you. My own timer.
That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to new business. Madam Clerk, do we have additions to tonight's agenda?
We have one addition to this evening's agenda. A motion to nominate and appoint interim city manager Albert Moore to the South Side Network Authority.
Motion? Councilman? We have a motion and a second. Please, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dooman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Is there any other new business that requires the action of council that would be brought before anyone, by anyone? If not, we'll move to announcements and comments. We have Media and Community Relations Assistant Director Tim Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. We begin tonight highlighting two financial outreach efforts for members of our community. Virginia businesses and residents affected by Tropical Storm Isaias and resulting tornadoes on August 3rd through August 5th of this year can apply for low-interest disaster loans for the United States Small Business Administration, or SBA. In accordance with health precautions for COVID-19, the SBA will not establish a field presence to assist survivors. However, the SBA will continue to provide customer service and conduct outreach virtually with webinars, Skype calls, phone assistance, and step-by-step application assistance. The SBA has opened a virtual disaster loan outreach center to help survivors apply online using the electronic loan application on the SBA's secure website. Virtual customer service representatives are available to help applicants complete the online application from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Applicants should contact the Disaster Customer Service Center at 800-659-2955 for assistance in completing their loan applications. Additionally, for small businesses, small agricultural cooperatives, small businesses engage in aquaculture, and most private nonprofit organizations. The SBA offers economic injury disaster loans to help beat working capital needs caused by the disaster. Economic injury disaster loan assistance is available regardless of whether the business suffered any physical property damage. The filing deadline to return applications for physical property damage is December 7th of this year. The deadline to return economic injury applications is July 7th of 2021. As noted earlier tonight, the Suffolk Economic Development Authority is receiving applications for the third round of its COVID-19 Small Business Assistance Grant Program. For the current distribution round applications, we open to small businesses established in Suffolk, both brick and mortar, as well as home-based businesses. Applications will close Saturday, October 31st at midnight. Suffolk Public Works advises several opportunities for the public to provide feedback on the desire for a new King's Highway Bridge. The project is not currently funded. However, the city needs public input on the preferred location of a new bridge if one is to be constructed in the future. Two outdoor meetings are scheduled. The first will be at John Yates Middle School on Wednesday, October 28th, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. The second will be held at the entrance to Lone Star Lakes Park on Thursday, October 29th, also from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Now, in keeping with Governor Ralph Northam's mandates due to COVID-19, the wearing of face masks and social distancing measures will be practiced at these outdoor meetings. For those unable to attend the scheduled public meetings, feedback can be provided at the online survey that can be found at the project website. The public comment period will close 21 calendar days after these public feedback meetings. City of Suffolk representatives will review and evaluate all information received as a result of the public meetings. Written comments must be postmarked, emailed, or delivered to the City of Suffolk by November 19th of this year. Suffolk Parks and Recreation received five awards in various categories from the Virginia Recreation and Parks Society during their virtual 65th Annual Conference. The statewide program honors individuals, departments, and organizations throughout Virginia who have demonstrated excellence in any of several areas during the previous year. Suffolk Parks and Rec received the following awards in our population category: Best New Environmental Sustainability for the Sleepy Hole Shoreline Stabilization Project; Best New Facility Parks, Playgrounds, Blueways, Greenways, and Trails for the Booker T. Washington Recreation Center Playground; Best Renovation Edition Parks, Playgrounds, Blueways, Greenways, and Trails for the Lake Mead Kid Zone Inclusive Playground; The Distinguished Volunteer Service Award went to Lee Hart for his volunteer work with Suffolk Parks and Rec. And the outstanding new professional was Emily Upton, who's the business manager for Suffolk Parks and Recreation. On Saturday, October 24th, the parking lots behind the Godwin Courts Building will transform into a carpool cinema. You can bring your family and enjoy the movie from your car for free. Two 40-foot tall screens will show Harry Potter and the Sorcerer's Stone. Citizens are encouraged to park behind the Godwin Courts Building or in the public parking lot on North Commerce Street. Come early to check out the local shops and restaurants and then enjoy the movie from the comfort of your car. The movie begins about around 7:00 o'clock. It's unknown at this time if there will be any special mandates from Governor Northam regarding Halloween and trick-or-treating. Of course, people also need to make their own decisions about whether they give out candy and/or allow their children, excuse me, to trick-or-treat. In Suffolk, trick-or-treating is for those ages 12 and under, and trick-or-treating ends at 8:00 PM on Halloween night by city code. As a reminder, if you're looking for a guide to what is happening in the City of Suffolk, visit the Suffolk Tourism website to view their calendar, which includes a variety of local events. Back to Suffolk Parks and Rec, they note that the 2020 Suffolk Holiday Parade, originally scheduled for December 12th, has been canceled. Now, while we remain under Governor Ralph Northam's executive order, which continues to limit the number of individuals that can gather together in public settings and mandates the wearing of masks, unfortunately, we're required to reevaluate large-scale gatherings, including parades, festivals, and similar events that we have traditionally enjoyed during the holiday season. However, residents are encouraged to celebrate the holiday spirit at the inaugural Suffolk Festival of Lights with over 35,000 bulbs. That'll be at Sleepy Hole Park at 4616 Sleepy Hole Road. The free drive-through holiday light display will be open November 20th through December 30th from 5:30 PM to 9:30 PM nightly. The display will be closed on Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, and Christmas Day, but open the rest of the time during that time period. And in observance of Election Day, Suffolk City Offices will be closed Tuesday, November 3rd. Normal operations will resume Wednesday, November 4th at 8:30 AM. The city observes all state-designated holidays. Election Day was added as a holiday for the Commonwealth of Virginia this year, and state offices are closed on this day. There will be no change in trash collection schedule for the period of November 3rd through November 6th as Suffolk Public Works Department will pick up trash as regularly scheduled next week. TFC Recycling will also conduct, or the week, I should say, the week of the holiday. TFC Recycling will also conduct their routes as normal, and Suffolk Transit will be operating on a normal schedule on Election Day. And again, we leave you with the ways we communicate with our residents and business owners, 514-4000, to get connected with city services, and our variety of social media outlets that we use as well to distribute information to our residents and business owners. With that, say good evening.
Thank you very much. We're going to turn now to announcements and comments from council members, and we will be returning to closed session after the announcements and comments. So, I guess we'll try to keep these as short as possible. But Councilman Johnson?
And I will keep it as short as possible. But each, each one of you council members have a little packet in front of you that I provided you with about talking about fire ants. And I only bring this to your attention because I've had numerous phone calls in the last week, particularly out in the Holy Neck Borough. Fire ants are a real problem in our city now, and it's something that I'm wondering if maybe we as a city don't need to address at some point, City Manager? I thought I'll talk to you about it later, but we need to have some kind of information to get out to the public because these things, not only, they're dangerous and they can sting you, and the stings cause lots and lots of problems. But it's something that's in our city, and I don't think it's going away quickly. Quickly, two more things. Happy birthday to Ruby Walden. Ruby Walden is one of our grand matriarchs in this city, and in Holy Neck, we could deem her right up there next to Sarah Lee. So, happy birthday, Ruby. So happy birthday, Ruby. Remind people, congratulations to Parks and Rec. We are so fortunate to have, what a wonderful Parks and Rec. We all know it, but it's nice to see it on the outside world, to come back and tell us how wonderful they are. Don't forget to go to the polls on Tuesday, November 3rd, to vote. You can't come and bellyache if you don't vote. That's nationally, that's locally, that's all over the country. So make sure your vote counts. Go and vote. With that, I'll simply say best of luck to everybody who's on the ballot this year. Thank you for running again, and thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Councilman Ward?
Yes, Al, I just wanted to let you know that I had a couple of calls by a bear in Puzil, been turning over some garbage cans. I'll give you more information about the addresses a little later on. I'd like to commend the people for voting kind of early. I don't know if you have been out there, but they are definitely out there voting early, partly because of the pandemic, but they are very, very involved in the voting. I wanted to mention about Temple Bethel. Temple Bethel, in the month of October, is giving free food packages, boxes, really. You can get there on Monday between 9:00 and 12:00. And matter of fact, I think they also giving food dinners away on Mondays and Wednesdays from 3:00 to 5:00. So the line is pretty long, and like you say, you will probably really enjoy the boxes because it's a pretty big box and got some good items inside. And I just want to say, no, I ain't gonna say that one. But anyway, I want to say God bless. Thank you.
Councilman Doeman?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to, I'm pleased that we authorized the bonuses for our employees today. Thank everybody, everyone's support here on council. I appreciate those employees continuing to serve during Rec coronavirus. Thank you very much. I want to congratulate the 15 new police recruits today. We had 15 new police recruits. And to them, you know, thank you for being willing to serve, and thank you for choosing Suffolk to do that. Also want to do a little shout out to our registrar, Ms. Susan Saunders, in regards to early voting. From what I understand, there's been about 10,000 people have already voted early, and out of the 10,000, I would say I got 9,999 people that were probably pretty happy about the process. So it is really going well. It's exceptionally well organized. I didn't even plan on early voting the other day. I just happened to stop by to get some information, and literally, I was in and out of there in five minutes. So it's something to consider. And as Councilman Johnson said, you know, I encourage everybody to go out and vote. And with that, I'll go to my quote of the night, and it's by James Clark, and it is, "A politician thinks of the next election a statesman of the next generation." And with that, I'll say good evening.
Councilman Miltier?
All of us are in preparation of the voting process. And tomorrow night, the last debate will be between the federal officials. It's very important that we listen to those gentlemen and make the right decision.
Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to Parks and Rec and all. Every time we get awards, it's, it's, it's great for our city, and I appreciate the hard work, each and everybody that works in those departments. Police Department did a fantastic job. Officers stepping up to be police officers in today's times, which is a little rough sometimes, but they all look like they're ready to do okay at it. The bonuses that we gave out, or the hazmat, I don't want to use bonuses because Teal will strangle me, but the hazmat or the hazpay we put out tonight, I hope it gives everybody that little shot in the arm and helps them through what they have been faced with in the last few months, because our frontline people are really take, have taken a beating. And so this is just a little something to maybe to get them passed a little bit. And I always thank our fired police officers in our departments that have stepped up and helped people during the COVID, and it looks like we're going to continue to do this. So, and really successful, and we maybe have a better way of having that, but it's pretty cool when you can go out. It's almost like the old days of the drive-in movie. So I appreciate what everybody's doing to try to give something to the public, to come out and, and do a little bit of, get some hair and get out and have some fun. Good luck to each and every one of the candidates that are running for election or reelection on November 3rd. I wish you, everybody, well, and we will find out very shortly what the results of that will be. And thank you very much for a good meeting tonight, and we'll be back here on the 4th, it looks like, and we'll see everyone then.
Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to, I appreciate the haz and pay for our people. I think it's a great, great situation, and I appreciate the effort they do. And I also want to thank city manager and his whole staff. We've gone through a number of months with this pandemic, and people have been working difficult, our whole staff, for all their effort. I do want everyone to get out and vote. Please get out and vote. Do the right thing, and also wear your mask and please stay safe. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of requests, Mr. Manager. I got a call from Woodlake over off Nelson Parkway, Lake, Woodlake Drive. They asked me to look into maybe getting the speed signs put over there, sticking a lot of speeding, 25 mile speeds on, and also some children that play signs put up as well. I'd appreciate someone taking a look at that. And I also would like to say, I think well deserved. I think that they've been patiently waiting, and I think they wish it could have been more, but it's well deserved for all the employees, look like, that was involved, is going to get some kind of recognition for their service. And I tell you, I look at what our police, fire, and our public works people and all houses that they do each and every day out there. To me, they're just not really being compensated sometime enough, really. I had another thing I just wanted to bring up. I know the election is coming up in two weeks, but, you know, we have a policy, I think, where any of us that's running, our office is supposed to turn a letter in for resignation for, if they are running, in this cycle. And I don't think we've received that as of yet. Have anyone received it, Mayor? City Attorney? Anyone?
Talked about that. It's not due yet.
The letter would not be to me. It was go to council, so I have not received anything.
Okay.
Be louder. We can't hear you.
Yeah, I couldn't hear that.
The letter goes to council, not to me, so I do not receive council's emails or letters. So I've not received anything in my office.
Okay, well, I need some information of how this should be done. The election is next Tuesday, and we know that regardless, the letter is supposed to be sent in. So I request that we get the letter, so we will have it for the election, when the election come up after the 4th. So I'd appreciate that. I, I was listening to the police today. We had 15 new recruits, and I think that they are very eager to move forward and come into Suffolk, and I think it's a very diverse group of people, and I can really appreciate all the recruiting. Chief Chandler, of what y'all are doing in the police department, trying to get the new recruits in. And also the information that's being put out there for the public to see what is taking place in the police department. And I saw where you had coffee with, with the chief, and I think that was a great tool that to reach out to people, let them know that you are available to listen to their concerns. And with that, that's all that I have.
Thanks. It in no way is even close to what is deserved by the people that have done all the work that they've done throughout this time, but, but again, we appreciate it, and we appreciate you getting it done in such a timely fashion. I know they've been waiting, and you got it done as, as quickly as you could. And, and I know too, Mr. Manager, that you've inherited a lot very quickly, and you're doing a very good job with it, I want you to know. I do want to let everybody know, well, congratulations to, to the new police officers that I was with them this morning, and I, as I told them, for them to choose this career, you know, and to get into this right now, and they, they seemed so excited and enthusiastic, and I'm just very proud that they chose Suffolk, that they chose to be police officers, and I think that they're choosing a time when we need, we need the very best we can get. And I think that's what we were seeing this morning, and I'm sure we'll see more and more of that. So I'm very pleased of that. I do want to let everybody know that October 29th, I will be at the foot of the beginning of the New Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel. The governor will be there, the secretary of transportation. We will be digging our shovels in because we are beginning to actually have the tunnels built. So this is exciting. It is the biggest transportation project in the nation, so there will be a lot of attention for it. Unfortunately, because of COVID, it's going to be limited as to how many people can actually be there, but it will be all over the news, and it will be a national story, because this is a $3.8 billion road project. So we're very, very proud to see this come together, and I'm very proud to be able to stand there with that shovel, because it's been a long time coming. I want to say happy birthday to Ruby Walden as well. She truly is a wonderful person in our community and, and always looks incredible, no matter what. So the other thing I would say to you is, yes, please, November 3rd, vote. And if, this is probably one of the most important elections in our country. I think it's huge. And I've, I've lived for quite a while now, and I've voted a lot of times, but I think that we are at a place and time where this vote is very, very important. So I would urge everybody to get out and vote and make sure that your voices are heard. I'm with Councilman Ward. This is, it's great the way the voting is working this time, you know, people are, and the fact that 10,000 people have already voted means we're sure to have a good outcome. So, you know, I, I think we just, the more people that are involved in the process, the better the process goes. So with that, we are going to return to our closed session. Madam Clerk, do we need? Okay.
Pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 and A8, the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance demotion, salaries disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the public body in consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically the city real estate assessor.
Question? Second? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. We will return.
Freedom of Information Act is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the second closed meeting of October the 21st, 2020 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712. Now therefore, it be it resolved the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby recertifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of Virginia law and only such business matters as identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Motion.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Here, Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we now could I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we now could I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. And we have the motion. Would you like to read it?
A motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, October the 26th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. for a special city council meeting for the purpose of the discussion of the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Agreed.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Doeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.